151 cases of COVID confirmed, 241 that are hospitalized, and 1,180 associated deaths. Now, that is really hard hit as a county because it's important to put into context because the frustration that you hear about reopening are from other parts of the states perhaps because take a look, compare those numbers to Windham County in eastern Connecticut. They have a total of 336 confirmed cases, only three associated deaths and 14, you know, individuals, I take that back, three hospitalized and 14 deaths. That is a marked contrast in regards to the controversy that we have with reopening that people will address a little later, but I think ultimately we have to base our reopening and cautious nature on medical facts and also increased testing, but ultimately it's also individual choices in this. We have restaurant openings, we have the idea of being able to reopen our capacity for daycare as well as summer camp planning. All of this has to go very cautiously. I know with the Memorial Day weekend, people are out and about with good weather. We really need to maintain and practice social distancing. We're not out of the woods yet and these numbers reflect that. So I appreciate the opportunity to be able to participate in this and be able to give some facts and data related to this, but Fairfield County by far, we're not out of the woods. So for everybody out there, I would encourage you to practice social distancing, wear your mask, not only for yourself, but in consideration of others. So the numbers are important in bearing it out. There are trends, but ultimately the data is still not good enough, so we have to be very cautious.
All right, thank you so much, Tony. And I'll be pretty brief on the federal stimulus update because, you know, we talked the last two webinars about the CARES Act and the real question is now, is what comes next? And that's to be determined. You know, Democrats and Republicans down in DC, they kind of see the next relief bill much differently. I think from the Republicans down in DC, they're preferring to incentivize work with proposals such as payroll tax cuts and liability insurance for employees while Democrats want the next relief bill to kind of tide Americans over as the economy begins to reopen. I don't have any magic answers to where that's going to end up. Last week, the House Democrats, they passed a $3 trillion stimulus bill. Now that's putting on pressure on the Republicans down in DC to offer an alternative package, maybe with infrastructure spending getting a lot more attention. That's an area where there's probably a fair amount of common ground. Another issue is up in the air is what about AIDS, aid for the states like Connecticut, for example? Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell, he made a comment about, you know, maybe let cash squeeze states go bankrupt. You know, that's not a helpful statement. Not only does that potentially cause issues for Connecticut, but that could potentially cause the cost of financing for any state to go up greatly when things like that are said, but he's kind of moved back from that statement back to way. Now he says, you know, we just want to have a pause in new refunding. I do, I think most people do predict there's going to be another round of stimulus within the next month, hopefully with some aid directly to Connecticut and infrastructure included. After the paycheck protection program, which we talked about at some length, it's still available if you're a small business and the probably the biggest update there is that the SBA, the Small Business Administration in the Treasury Department, they released an application which also had application instructions. And the reason why that was important is because it kind of advises borrowers on how they can apply for the forgiveness of the loan. That wasn't always completely clear. And, you know, there'll probably be further regulations on that. So and also it notes the importance of kind of eligible non-payroll costs while applicants are filling out those forms. So that's kind of the federal stimulus update. From here, I'm going to pass it over to Laura and I'll mute you hopefully.
Okay, great. Thanks, Brian. Thanks, everybody for being here and I hope everybody is well and friends and family well as we enter this Memorial Day weekend. It'll be quite a different one for us. I've been reflecting on all of the parades and the beautiful sea ceremony and all the things that we traditionally do. But what I want to touch on is unemployment and there are kind of four different buckets just to kind of go over. So the first one is regular unemployment. If you have been let go from, you know, you are an employee of a company and hopefully if that's the case and if you've been let go and you've been able to file for unemployment benefits without any issues using the blue button on the Department of Labor site. If you do have specific issues, we are happy to hear those and try to get those addressed for you specifically. What we have found is that the DOL has been making headway. They've processed a little bit more than a half a million claims so far. And the situations that we generally deal with are ones that are very particular to an individual. So if you are struggling with that, please reach out to us. In addition to the regular unemployment, what opened fairly recently was the pandemic unemployment assistance, the PUA program for gig workers or for self-employed. So as self-employed individuals, we don't contribute into unemployment. So traditionally that's not a benefit that we have received, but now with the federal support that is available. And so far as of yesterday, there's been about 16,000 PUA claims that have been processed through the DOL. In either of those cases, you may be eligible for the extra $600 a week, which is also a federal stimulus program. The PUA runs from February 2nd until December 26th, so it goes for the rest of the year. And if you filed when it started, you know, when it opened, which was kind of just recently this month, and depending on what you put in for your first date of unemployment, if you will, you should have received a retroactive payment. And then going forward, you do have to file weekly just as regular unemployment benefits. It's generally suggested on Sunday because that is the first day of the week and then it's processed sooner. What is starting today is the Department of Labor is mailing out, I think about 77,000 letters to people who may be eligible for the third government program, which is the pandemic emergency unemployment compensation program. That's what provides the extra 13 weeks of benefits. The letters are very explicit. They outline step-by-step instructions and like the other federal programs, you, once your state employment benefits have expired, that is a criteria, then you refile for this particular program. So if you are eligible, you should be receiving a letter and there is or will be information on the DOL site that will also help you. But again, I would just like to reiterate, this is a stressful time for so many. If you are personally struggling or know someone in our community who is with getting benefits from DOL, please reach out to any of us and we will help get those resolved for you.
Thank you so much, Laura. And Kristin McCarthy, they is going to provide a very timely update on what's going on with the state of Connecticut and their reopening. And I think we're going to try to do a share screen and she's very bold, she's brave. We can do it.
Well, those of you who were here last time might remember the failed attempt, but you know, it's a learning process. Thank you, Brian, and to my fellow delegation members. And Mark, it's really great to have you here today. Laura, I think you do a great job explaining what's a pretty complicated process over there at DOL and I appreciate that. So I am just going to start off by putting up a graphic that actually one of our, can everyone see that? Did it work this time? Okay, great. So Mark's going to talk a little bit more about all of this, but phase one, as Senator Wong said, started this week. On this side here, you can see what was open before. So unlike some states, actually manufacturing, construction, real estate, all these areas were open throughout under different workplace rules. And now we have outdoor dining at restaurants, offices, outdoor recreation, the delay then with Sarah Harris salons, but June 1st, so they're kind of in between. You can see it says approximately June 20th for phase two. That's because we'll see how the metrics continue, as Senator Wong pointed out, specifically hospitalization data will be one of those seven metrics that I talked about last time. And then phase three is expected to be about four weeks after that. Again, depending on how we do with metrics. The reopen Connecticut Committee will be issuing a full report this week that will help us all know and understand exactly what metrics they'll be looking at in terms of potentially pulling back if things go south. So here in town, DCD, which is the State Department of Economic and Community Development, has a ton of resources on their website for small businesses, sector guides, graphics and visuals. Obviously here in town, Mark is our boots on the ground. We're so lucky to have him with the team that the First Select Women's put together. And other organizations include the Women's Business Development Council and Connecticut Small Business Development Center who have additional resources. A lot of people are asking about enforcement with reopening, you know, do we need to wear masks? And I do, I have my mask here today to show everyone, you know, the safe putting on and off just over your ears and not adjusting it by your face. But residents and employees can report non-compliance to local law enforcement or to 211. If you have a complaint, you can actually go online and fill out a complaint form or if you don't have access, you can actually call 211 and they'll fill out a complaint form. Our local law enforcement and local health departments have been given guidance by the state. You know, in terms of those safe practices and I was showing you my mask, enforcement, the idea is always that it would be that people would comply on a voluntary basis and you've heard the governor say this over and over again. No matter how much enforcement it is, in the end, it's going to come back to all of us continuing those safe practices, wearing a mask. The First Select Woman just had a press conference at noon to reinforce all this, keeping the six feet of social distance, not gathering in groups of five or more. And one of the other things in terms of keeping those safe practices is our hospitals and doctors are encouraging folks to go back and get the care that you've been putting off. Now is the time to start to do that. The capacity is there and the safe practices are there. Just to address actually one of the questions that we got about why would we have a regional approach? Some folks have been frustrated. You know what? I'm going to actually stop the screen sharing. There we go. How's that? Now we're back to being able to see each other. Some folks are wondering why, you know, why are we doing this with New York and Rhode Island? And Dr. Ko, who is the co-chair of the reopen Connecticut Committee, has talked about the fact that we do travel back and forth in between. So that regional approach has been important, though here in Connecticut, the governor and his team under the executive order have been making those decisions. The legislature has not been formally involved. We are not in session. I'm hoping that we will be and we'll be able to add our voice. I will say that we've talked about this many times here. The reopen Connecticut Committee was advised by some folks who are coming from both sides of the aisle and using the frame of public health, but also understanding that the public health and the ability to do what we need to do will help us more effectively get our economy back up and running. And that's really important. The other thing that I will note is the information continues to evolve on a daily basis. So there's, there's a lot of, a lot of fighting and arguing we can do and I think a lot of people getting understandably concerned and perhaps even angry. I will just share one little anecdote and I know I'm talking a little bit too much, Brian, but I have a Time Magazine from early, I think it was back in January and the issue on the front cover was a person from China wearing a mask and it was talking about what was happening in China. And it's really interesting now to go back and read those articles. I've done that. We didn't know, people didn't know. There was so much that was unknown. There were some things that were, but we are still learning about this virus. And yesterday on a call for the General Assembly with the State Department of Public Health, Dr. Ko, who's a Yale epidemiologist, said that we really are going to need to continue learning. And as Senator Wong was talking about, testing, tracing, contact tracing and supported isolation are going to be really important as we go forward. And two quick things I'll add in terms of reopening that connect to testing. One of them is our testing capacity, which is the diagnostic testing. The state has currently met the metric of being able to test about 45,000 people per week and by mid-June expects to get to 100,000. But really interestingly, more people are interested in getting the antibody test as opposed to the diagnostic test. And right now, the CDC is saying, and Dr. Ko and Dr. Carter, our state epidemiologists, those tests aren't really ready for primetime. The ones we need to rely on are the diagnostic tests and we have to try and get the word out to people, please go get tested if you think that you have symptoms in any way. And then the other piece is the antibody or the serology survey, as they call it. They do expect to have kind of a later in June, as those tests become a little bit more developed, a survey similar to what we've read about in other countries and even in New York, to give us a better sense of who has been carrying and transmitting the virus. So all, that is all tied into our reopening. And I know Mark's going to talk about more what it's like on the ground, but I am so grateful for the opportunity and agree, thank you, Brian, for putting this together for us.
Thanks, Kristin. And now we'll turn it over to Mark, the director of, is it, I don't know, from Department of Economic Development, you tell me the exact title, but we're, you know, he's a wealth of knowledge, been with the town for many, many years. And yeah, I'll turn it over to you, Mark. Thank you so much for joining us as our special guest today.
Thank you, Brian, and thanks to the other members of the delegation who've been doing really yeoman's work in getting information out to the community and advocating on our behalf up in Hartford and down in Washington as well. So I really appreciate all of your efforts on behalf of the Fairfield community. My title is Director of Community Economic Development, but we're going to focus on the economic development piece today. Certainly, as we went through the initial phase of reopening, in advance of that, the First Select Woman established a business reopening task force, which was comprised of representatives from various departments or permitting agencies such as health, the building official, fire marshal, planning and zoning in my office. And they've really been doing tremendous, tremendous work, obviously focused on restaurants, which were allowed to reopen for outdoor dining only, but the overall purpose is really to provide support to the business community as we have been doing throughout. Look specifically at our permitting process to streamline that where we can eliminate any unnecessary red tape and provide whatever assistance we can reasonably provide to the Fairfield business community. And we're very much committed to working with our small businesses to try to, again, make sure that they're able to navigate this constantly shifting environment we find ourselves in. And I think that's one of the points that Kristin touched on. You know, certainly we try to stay up to date on this information. It continually evolves. That, I think to the governors and the task force at the state level, to their credit, they do take into account feedback from the public and from business owners, but at the same time in doing so, it does create some confusion on the ground here, both from the business owner's perspective in terms of how do I safely reopen and comply with these guidelines and from the public as well. And so we're trying to help those businesses understand how they can safely reopen. Obviously, safety is everyone's top foremost concern, not only for the safety of the frontline workers and employees at these businesses, but also the people that patronize the businesses and the public at large. So we continue to work through that. I think the first phase of reopening went fairly well. I think it's not as if you flip a switch and all of a sudden you have hordes of people back there. I think, again, what businesses, individual businesses are doing, what the state is doing through the research, the self-certification process is to provide a higher level of confidence for the public that, you know, things are with appropriate precautions. Obviously, we do need to maintain physical distancing where our face coverings went out in public, but with those precautionary measures in place, it is safe to resume a certain amount of activity. There's still limitations on gathering size, which affects, you know, dining establishments. But the group that I've been working with on the outdoor dining, we have a pretty good tradition of outdoor dining in Fairfield to begin with. At the beginning of the year, we had 60 permitted locations, 60 locations in town that were approved for outdoor dining. We have in the space of last week approved 28 applications for temporary outdoor dining permits. 14 of those are new establishments, locations that hadn't formally been approved for outdoor dining and the other half were an expansion of existing outdoor dining permission. And all those were done in a matter of a day or two at the most. And all the applications that have been approved, been submitted, have been approved. There's no permit application fee or application. All those fees have been waived and the application process is pretty straightforward. I'm really pleased with the work of my counterparts and the various permitting agency. I think everyone stepped up to help make this successful. I think a few other things of note for those who are not able to participate or attend the First Select Woman's press conference earlier this afternoon at noon time. We are reopening beaches to more activities. There'll still be limitations in terms of parking, so it's best to check before you go to make sure that there is adequate parking capacity at the destination of your choice. People will be allowed to put out blankets and beach chairs and the like, provided again, we maintain physical distancing from one another 15 feet. So you have sufficient clearance for people to get by and distance from your group to the next group that's on the beach. Playgrounds remain closed, but other open space areas, including fields, are open. Again, with limitations in terms of gatherings, there's certainly no organized team sports, but if you want to gather with your family to enjoy our many fine parks and open spaces, you're certainly welcome to do that. And I think I'll just pause there and kick it back to Brian if I, there's perhaps other questions or things that I could touch on.
Sure, we do have a list of questions, so I'll jump into those. And Mark, I think the other big news was the, and as expected, the 4th of July fireworks are being canceled.
I left you have the bad news for.
Oh, I know. And I love, I've been doing fireworks for five years. For five years I've been lighting fireworks off. Bad joke. But, um, thank you, Tommy. I needed that. I needed someone. For the first question we have here has to do with our tracking systems. As I'm concerned that Connecticut has a very outdated system for keeping track and reporting deaths, does the state legislative body have any power to modernize this system? It seems ridiculous that present reporting can be two to three weeks behind when considering opening towns and cities and phases, it would be helpful to know about the curve.
I can offer feedback on that and that's a very important question. I think there are two components of it. One is the fact that the delay in the death rate data points, a large part is attributed to the delay in getting information from our nursing homes. When you look at the, a high percentage of our deaths occurring in nursing homes and the delay that was occurring, the legislative body really pressed the governor's office to get the data up to date and really have some good analysis. And in fact, I believe that was one of the big reasons why the previous commissioner of public health was let go, was the incredible pressure and the challenge that occurred in our nursing homes. So I think that's one part in the number that we're looking at. The other part is really that, you know, we don't know when the virus hit this community and it might have even occurred earlier than the March timelines that we're looking at. So there are bases in which we may be going back to assess possible deaths that are caused by this that was not calculated because even the latest data had some yet to be determined. But ultimately, nursing homes are a big component and there was a big delay in that data point. I want to report that, you know, the Connecticut health officials, along with the governor's office, want and will be testing residents and staff members for Corona at all 215 nursing homes by June. And you're going to have every nursing home resident and staff member tested and continually tested, but the problem is we don't know how frequent the tests will be and the nursing home consideration is a current pressing issue when you're talking about the fact that you are unable to visit loved ones in person since March practically, when this, you know, closure occurred. But what I'm hearing is that they may not be able to see loved ones in person until September. I know the governor gave some allocations in regards requesting that nursing homes provide virtual contacts, but with loved ones that are in nursing homes, their inability to connect with loved ones, I think that is one of the big pressing issues that is ongoing that we need to address. And it is a big factor in regards to the data point being delayed. So nursing home issues is front and center and I think we have to do a far, far better job, not only for the patients that are there, but for staff that are working so remarkably hard at such risk, but also for loved ones that are at a quandary and a frustration that they're not able to take care of their loved ones. I've gotten so many calls and unfortunately, some very, very, very sad stories. So our nursing home facilities and the testing and the process in place is absolutely critical and that is part of the data point that we have not been getting.
So can I, I'd like to just add one thing. The questioner said a two to three week delay. I just will point out, and I'm not sure with the questioner, deaths are a lagging indicator. So when we look at the data, you know, if someone has been hospitalized and then they are in the hospital for a period of time sadly before they are deceased. So one of the things I think that sometimes people get confused with the data points is that question or that aspect of it. So when you look at the data that Senator Wong was talking about in the beginning, while our hospitalization numbers are going down, the death rates are still going up and that's why, and that may be very apparent to everyone, but I think that's been a point of confusion. I do think things are much better now because of some of the pressure that's been put on. And I just would add the role of local journalism. The press has actually done a phenomenal job as well as many legislators who have been pushing, but I, it's been important to hear from our journalists who have been pressing for that data and information as well. So that's helpful and important.
Yeah, and I think the biggest kudo has to go for family members that have contacted us and pressed that they're extremely frustrated, their hands are tied and there's a detachment from state government in recognizing their loved ones' needs and their personal needs in regards to being in touch. So journalism have been incredibly important, but I would applaud the family members that are on the lookout for their loved ones because unfortunately, sometimes they've fallen through the cracks and that is unacceptable.
And just so we get to all these questions, so the next one is a great response from you guys, thank you. Why is Governor Lamont agreeing to link our opening to that of New York City with the highest rate, highest rate of deaths in the US? Do you, as our legislative representatives from Fairfield, agree with this approach? I don't mind going first, Miss. I think the caution that Connecticut has shown, especially early on, was right. I am, I think this is a technical term, I am starting to get a little bit more antsy about being too lockstep with New York City and New York State. Obviously, we need to be coordinated because of the travel impacts. I mean, obviously you look at Metro North, for example. So I think at this point, I mean, we have to weigh out all the, you know, the costs and the benefits of our opening. Obviously, there is a danger in reopening too soon with the potential, you know, getting another spike in COVID cases, but there's obviously, you know, damage being done through the social isolation. You can think of a lot of at-risk children who aren't getting the same amount of check-ins or the damage being brought, you know, through unemployment and the negative impacts that have. So it's all a balancing act. So there's no easy answers here. I'll open this up to the group.
Yeah, let me jump in on that, too. I think that there's a level of coordination that is important, right? We've always been the tri-state area. We, you know, work whatever, have family close.
We, you know, work whatever, have family close by, and it's not just New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, but Massachusetts and Rhode Island, too. But I also think we have to do what is right for the state of Connecticut. And what's become a little bit more concerning to me, I would say, is the decision-making process. So when this started, there was a very collaborative process between the four legislative leaders, Senate and House, Ds and Rs, and so our four caucus leaders and the governor. And that provided a mechanism for us to also be able to provide input from the community on issues that needed to be addressed, things that were, you know, needed to be looked at, and it was quite effective. And as time has moved on, that process has shifted quite a bit. And now the reopen committee has been disbanded. That has been the interface between the legislative leaders and the governor. And, you know, in addition, he has, our governor's hired a consulting firm, which, you know, in my corporate worlds, BCG was a big one, McKinsey, there are real value, but it's consistency and transparency, I think, that is really important to understand how decisions for our state are being made, right? You can use hair dryers, you can't use hair dryers. We're going to open, you're not going to open, which was a real hardship to businesses. And in a pandemic, you certainly don't like to criticize a leader, and it's always easy to look back, hindsight's always 2020. But I think having that transparency of how decisions are being made for our state, and the coordination is important, but I think we still have to lead for what's best for Connecticut.
And I would, I said yesterday on a call with the Connecticut State Department of Public Health, for example, their testing plan, I said it should be made available publicly to all legislators and the public so we can have access, understand, because back to what Mark was saying, we can reopen businesses, but until consumers feel confident that they are safe going out and that they understand that these practices will help them to be safe, that we have sufficient testing, that people are accessing it, that we have this virus under control, that the R naught remains below one here in Connecticut, that that hospitalization rate, all of those metrics. So I think it's time for the legislature to go, to be able to be back in session and to have that direct input and communication in the process. We're not in lockstep with New York. I do think the coordination, I think that's actually a really good word for it that Representative Devlin used, is important, but ultimately, it's up to us here in Connecticut. And, you know, even during some of the pressers, Governor Lamont, when he had the reopen Connecticut Committee folks on, spoke to the point that he's taken advice and input from them, but ultimately, the buck stops with him. I will speak to, I've gotten some feedback from folks about, you know, why aren't you as a legislature doing more? I've consistently advocated for that with my leadership, but I also recognize that this is all over the country and here in town. Our governors and our chief elected officials are operating under the public health emergency. I think as time goes by, we're going to see that begin to shift, rightfully so, and I think it is important that the process be transparent and that we as legislators are the people who are here, like Mark, boots on the ground, hearing from our constituents, and we need to be able to provide input and feedback.
Collaboration between all our states is critical. Joint buy, sharing information, it's critical. But Connecticut is not New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, or Rhode Island. And in fact, Fairfield County is different than Wyndham County, what I provided. Even in New York, the opening up of upstate New York, you've got to take a case-by-case analysis, and I think that's where data is important. But ultimately, it is my belief that our local political leaders down on the ground through public health and through Mark and through our First Selectwoman, we need to support them in making decisions. One of the most troubling aspects in regards to how this is proceeding in the preceding days is, I think the governor is up to now forty-seven executive orders. These executive orders are a granting of widespread powers. In essence, he's making laws that impact every citizen and without a lot of input from all the various legislators, municipal leaders. The ultimate concern is that we are in a position that our hands are tied and we're not able to represent people. Bottom line, we have to have a collaborative checks and balances. Connecticut is uniquely different. Fairfield County is uniquely different from the other counties. With all that said, we have to balance public health, economic revitalization, with the balance that it's individual choices. You know, individuals need to practice the protocols of social distancing, wearing their mask, taking the precaution, not needing to go out, but ultimately, you've got to have a delicate balance, and I think we're skewed too much to bigger government, because the reality is, we're not having the options for people to make those decisions, and we're not facing it. My frustration is, the latest decisions of reopening, we may have had the phases in there, but that changes day by day. If businesses are trying to have some planner schedule and we're changing it on an arbitrary basis, by the hair salon and barber shop as an example, it's frustrating, and there's no input. So when we go back to this discussion, I believe in local input, I believe in individual choices, and, you know, Connecticut is uniquely Connecticut, Fairfield County is uniquely Fairfield County. So it's a really important question, and I think it's a broader public policy that is festering up to the top, and it's a real challenge. And for me, as a legislator, I have challenged and asked of the governor's office that we need to be more collaborative.
Next question we have here relates to the nursing home death and the fact that why are nursing homes not addressed differently from the rest of the state of Connecticut? And I actually do think there should be an investigation into the nursing home issue where I think we have three times the amount of deaths nationwide. Not because it's about pointing fingers, but more importantly, if this fall, if, you know, COVID kind of comes back, let's use the next few months to figure out what we've done wrong. So I do think we need kind of be laser-focused on the nursing homes, and I think that's starting to happen as of the last few weeks, but clearly, I think mistakes were made. I don't know if anyone else has anything they want to opine on that. There wasn't much of a question there.
Well, I think I shared that earlier in regards to the challenge in the data and some of the protocols, and there has been accountability on the governor's office, and I applaud him for making that decision to replace the commissioner. But that being said, it is one of the big pressing matters, because human lives are at risk, not only the patients that are there and their loved ones, but the staff members that are working there. It really is a challenging and pressing issue that we need to address now.
The next question deals with small gyms. Those are like, you think of like studios that are less than two thousand square feet by appointment only, and the question is, do we support having small gyms opened by June thirtieth, if appropriate steps are taken? I'll give that up to the group. I know where I stand, but I'll let others answer first.
Well, I think it's, I actually, Brian, I think it's answered. I took down my slide, but they will, they will be included in the June twentieth, or they're slated to be included in the June twentieth phase, too.
Yep, and I think the key thing that with the June twentieth date with the small gyms is that it's not done in such a prescriptive manner that they're not able to financially, you know, take care of themselves. I mean, I've heard, I don't know what the requirements or restrictions are on that. Obviously, there's going to be reasonable restrictions in social distancing, people not sharing equipment and things like that. I don't know if there's going to be more guidance on that. That may be what makes or breaks that opening on the twentieth.
Yeah, I'm sure. Different point of view on this, but, I mean, I think small gyms should be allowed to open now. They are very different than these big, massive, you know, exercise complexes. They really operate like families. Even pre-shutdown, there were precautions being taken. I can't speak for every single gym, but it's a, it's a different animal than the big, large kinds of, you know, complexes and studios. So I fully support them being part of phase two. I wish it was sooner.
Yeah, we've been advocating that as well. Probably, you know, I think there does need to be a little bit more nuance in both in terms of the size as well as the type of activities that we're attempting to regulate here. But to your point, Brian, we have heard from a number of businesses that are trying to obviously comply with the requirements and, you know, ensure the safety of themselves and their workers as well as the public in terms of sourcing and procuring both PPE, hand sanitizer, all these things. So I know the state has done some work to make available free face masks as well as infrared thermometers. We've provided that information to our business community so they can take advantage of those programs, but we're also hearing from restaurants and from some others, and we expect that might worsen as we open more business establishments, that it's sometimes difficult to procure some of these supplies.
Yeah, and I would like to see the June twentieth date be kind of hurried up and that to happen sooner with kind of, you know, guidance in writing of what they can and cannot do. Next question is regarding the PUA.
I just add one thing. I believe the goal, my understanding was the goal was that the guidance for those June twentieth businesses would be out at least two weeks ahead of that June twentieth date. Not, I mean, that's not a lot of time still, but that's what I had heard. I don't know if others are the same, but I'll let you go on to the next question.
Sure. So the PUA unemployment insurance for independent contractors, do we have to file weekly on Sunday or one more time for another twenty-six week? And when would that date be?
So I, I think I kind of, so the bottom line is, yes, you have to file weekly. I suggest do it on Sunday. That's the first day of the week. It happens sooner, and it's just an easy routine to have, but it has to happen for every week that you are receiving or, you know, trying to get benefits for.
The next question is, does Fairfield have any different requirements for reopening that are different from the state? And I believe the answer is no. I mean, obviously, you have to follow the state guidance. But Mark, if you want to add anything else in that, you're welcome to.
You're right, Brian. We do not have any other additional requirements other than what the state is prescribing.
And then, next question is, commercial office buildings, are landlords responsible to applying the rules to public areas, restroom, stairways, elevators? And I guess the question is, what rules, I mean, are they mandated to throw someone out of the elevator for not wearing a mask? I don't believe the landlord's responsible for that. I don't know if anyone else has anything else to add with that.
Well, one of the governor's press conferences articulated that the executive order stipulates that masks are required in public. And so with that stipulation, that if you're out and you're interacting with people, you are required to have masks. There are some exceptions, which is creating some confusion, that if you have a medical reason why you can't wear the mask for young children, those are considerations, but nevertheless, the executive order through the blanket application articulated that anyone that is out in public is required to have a mask. And so if you're going out into a public space and commercial spaces, you're going in an elevator, you got to have a mask. That's what the executive order stipulates.
Yeah, well, just get stuff like, if you're the landlord, what do you got to do? Do you got to throw that tenant out? Which, that's where I think you get into these gray areas, where I don't know if there is an exact answer.
Well, by statute, by the executive order, they can, but it creates a very sticky situation, which we go back ultimately, as I said earlier, it's individual conduct and behavior. You know, you should wear masks to protect yourself and be respectful and considerate in protection of others. That is kind of the new protocol that we're going to engage in. So it really is ultimately, government can't make all the laws. I think individual conduct and individual responsibility has to be a big part of this whole process toward the reopening and a new normalization.
I think part of that will just be even peer pressure, right? You get on an elevator, someone doesn't have one, be like, get your mask or get off. But I think it is the landlord's responsibility to make sure there is hand sanitizer when you walk into a building, and if there are, you know, food kiosks or things like that that may or may not be able to be open, so those kinds of general things. But I think to Tony's point, too, a lot of it will just come down to, you know, peer pressure. I was out in town the other day, and there were some very proud people walking without masks. It was like, hey, buddy, you know, put it on, stop holding it, so.
That is true. The good news is, they seem to be in the minority, so we generally have had pretty good compliance overall. But it is incumbent upon the individual to exercise the appropriate precautionary steps, as Tony mentioned, and so far, most people are complying. And we also have, I'm proud to say, a lot of folks that do report incidences where we have violations. It becomes somewhat self-regulating, because we have a number of folks that do let us know if they don't see compliance fully.
Can I just add? I do, I said earlier that the role of individual choice is important, and I think it's peer pressure or, as we say in substance use prevention, a change in social norms. But it's not, in this case, it's not just about being respectful. This is a public health pandemic, and there's evidence that shows that wearing masks is a protective factor and can help reduce the spread of this virus. So I know, you know, we've, it's been really great, because we've been working together so much as a delegation and our local leaders and the local team to just continue to be consistent in these messages. You know, I'll just name that in some of the national dialogue, we see this mixed messaging around mask-wearing and the whole, you know, it's my choice. Well, of course, it's my choice to break the law as well, and there are consequences. In this case, it's a choice whether we wear a mask or not, and, you know, we're not going to go to jail for not wearing a mask. But the consequences potentially are, if a lot of people choose not to wear the masks, that there could be greater community spread. So I, you know, I brought my mask with me, and I've seen Laura in some, you know, really neat, you've actually made masks, too, right? Which is very impressive.
I'm a sour.
Yeah, that's impressive. So I think, you know, the more we can encourage people, and that's what we know, you know, you catch more flies with honey kind of thing, encouraging, like you said, Laura, I think that peer pressuring and modeling and all that, but it can become really difficult for, for example, businesses who are requiring folks to wear masks, for people to be having to police one another. It's a tricky, tricky thing. So I'm glad to hear, Mark, that what we're seeing so far is that so many people in Fairfield are choosing to make that public health option a practice for themselves.
I want to add, compliment the First Selectwoman and her leadership in this effort and making information available, as we're doing right now, and really being informed. But bottom line, people need to recognize there are three-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-two deaths in the state of Connecticut, and we have fifty-three. So the threat is real. It's a life and death issue, and we're in the phases of reopening where it's a delicate balance, and we're going to have to maintain the data. But ultimately, you know, it is part of our role as legislative leaders to give you this information, keep you informed, and be an advocate for you on issues that are important to you. But there is an important part. Government can't be the solution to everything. It can't tell everybody what to do with their lives in some ways, but personal, individual behavior, conduct, and consideration and respect, you know, not everybody's going to agree, but I think ultimately, if you think of looking at these data points and how it's going to impact people and real-life consequences, I think people will be more responsive when they realize it. But it's a different conversation when you're talking to somebody in Wyndham County who says, this isn't real. Well, it's very real in Fairfield County. So individual choice balance with government support and information resources, that's the way to go, I think. But government being the end-all solution, sometimes it's not always that way.
Yeah, and the next question we have regards mail-in ballots and whether or not we're supportive of that. And, I mean, I would happy to answer first. My biggest concern with, you know, mail-in ballots or the governor's latest executive order is less with the substance and more with the process. I do think a change allowing that through executive order is unconstitutional. It's an unconstitutional delegation of authority. I think there's a separation of power issue. So to me, you know, I think we need to get back So to me, you know, I think we need to get back into session and address it and ensure that, you know, if someone is at risk or a senior, that they don't have to feel threatened by going out to vote. So in some ways, you know, there's alignment there. And this is less maybe for me, a Republican-Democrat issue and more of a legislative versus executive issue and just ensuring that we follow the the laws of our state constitution. But I'll let others opine.
So what I would say is, what I've always said, I think anybody eligible to vote should have that ability, and there should not be barriers to do that. That said, so if it is absentee ballot that ultimately is the way to do that, and it can be done properly, I would support it. But here's the deal, right? In our state of Connecticut, whoops, sorry about that. In our state of Connecticut, if there's been an issue in voting integrity, it has been around absentee ballots. And I know that our registrars and our town clerks have an abundance of questions about the process and how it would work to really ensure that voter integrity. So that is critically important, and I think the devil is always in the details. Sometimes it is tried to be made a partisan issue, and I don't think it should be. To me, it comes down to people eligible to vote should. It's gotta be done in a way that maintains the integrity of our voting.
I'll do, go ahead, Senator.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I I have already said I think we need to get back in session because we have to address this for November. The governor's executive order covers the primary, and this is gonna need to be addressed for November. And absolutely, if, you know, I've heard lots of things. I I sent a tweet out yesterday and got lots of hearty responses against it. But if people are going to be putting their health at risk, particularly those who are 65 and older, they need to be able to get an absentee ballot. And we need to be able to give our registrars and clerks the time they need. As it is, it's a compressed timeline to look at the increase in absentee ballots. And I think that's, you know, really important for us to address that sooner rather than later. I don't wanna see people being at risk. We're continuing to, the first select woman today, the governor every day, continues to encourage people age 65 and older to stay home. We don't know how long that's gonna last, but I think we have to make sure that our towns and cities are supported in being able to do that process. I, you've probably heard me say before that I, there are six states that do, you know, vote by mail. And so I think it can be done, but it takes time. And and understandably, some of those states, it took them years to get to that point. Lots of things have been compressed in time because of this pandemic. And this is going to have to be one of them because we need to make sure that people have access to voting safely.
In times of crisis, and we talked about the 47 executive orders that the governors implemented, in times of crisis, there is an important balance between individual rights and and protection of of our constitutional basis versus the sense of urgency. With that said, you know, early voting, no-excuse absentee ballot voting has been through the legislative body. It passed, in fact, it was nearly four or five years ago that it was a public referendum that was voted by the general public in a November election ballot, and it was soundly defeated by the public. So that's important to note, that the public had offered a viewpoint on that. I supported this past legislative session, early voting and and eliminating the no-excuse absentee ballot. So those are important points of consideration, and maybe we have to revisit that on a legislative basis because changing our constitution cannot be taken lightly, and it cannot be usurped during a point of crisis. So with that said, what we're undertaking right now is perhaps a a usurpation of constitutionality that I hope we will eventually change, but it hasn't changed. And to bypass legislative body and the representative will of the people, it's 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 a cause for concern, it's a cost for process. I think the other argument that is being made here is, as we began on Wednesday, the reopening of Connecticut and looking into June, the Phase Two and Phase Three that's opening, people argue, if I am safe enough to go to Best Buy and to go to the grocery store, one of the most important bases of of our democracy is the right to vote and have an impact. We're just usurping that process? I'm concerned about the process. The idea of of no-excuse absentee ballot, I fully support it, and I support it by vote. But this process, using this emergency and bypassing the legislative process and the will of the people, which which, in order to pass this in the past, you had to have a public referendum. We're bypassing that, and that's very dangerous.
So I I just, I'm actually going to need to sign off. I have a student taking an AP exam in the room next to me and at 2 o'clock. So I, but I did wanna say that I don't think equating going to Best Buy or, I know a lot of people have made that argument. I got that on my Twitter feed yesterday. Folks can make decisions to have others shop for them or to not go to stores. It's a different decision with voting, so I just, I caution against that. But I apologize that I need to jump off, and I wanna, again, thank you, Brian, for organizing, and thank my fellow legislators and Mark for being here with us today.
And we're gonna wrap up right now, too. So thank you, everyone, for attending, and hopefully we'll touch base in a couple more weeks. And that would hopefully with more, with some positive news as we work through this. Thank you, everyone.
Brian, thank you for organizing this. It's appreciated.
Thank you to everyone.
Wishing everybody a good Memorial Day weekend and to remember those that made the sacrifices, even though there are no parades, that we take a moment to thank our veterans and their loved ones that have paid the sacrifice. Thank you very, very much to all our veterans.